Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom? Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. At this time, I will ask our deputy city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council due to just cause or emergency circumstances.
Madam Mayor, we have received no such requests.
Thank you. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options are for public comment or remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will now begin this special meeting with the first of two study sessions. The item is Complete Streets North Central Plan: An Introduction, and Sue Ellen Atkinson, our principal transportation planner, will lead the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz Nash. Councilmembers, Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner with the Public Works Department, and I have with me tonight co-presenting Christian Olano from Winter Consultants. So tonight, we'll be presenting an introduction and update on the Complete Streets North Central Plan. All right. An overview of what we'll be discussing tonight. We'll be discussing what the Complete Streets North Central Plan is, how we're approaching this plan, which is a bit different from some of our prior plans in the city, highlights from our Phase One engagement focus, how we're moving forward into identifying recommendations to go into the plan, and then next steps and schedule. So in terms of council feedback this evening, this item is informational only. We're presenting an update on progress to date, so no specific feedback is being requested at this time. General comments are very much welcome. Just to give a little bit of a briefer on what a complete street is, it really looks at re-envisioning how our roadways are designed. Our roadways in San Mateo are largely built out at this point and have been designed in the past to accommodate vehicles primarily. So in looking towards developing complete streets, we're looking at re-envisioning those roadways in a way that makes transportation safe, no matter how you choose to get around. So that could be driving, walking, biking, taking transit, et cetera. We are doing a citywide complete streets plan, which I believe all of you are aware of, and then at the same time, council directed staff to move forward with a complete streets north central plan. And that differs from the citywide plan in that it really enables us to take a deep dive into the specific needs of the north central community and understand what the goals and what the concerns are related to transportation and getting around the community and then access to the city as a whole. As part of this plan, we are really taking a different approach by focusing on deep listening during the first phase. You'll notice tonight, we don't have any recommendations to share. We don't have draft projects yet. Over the last seven months or so, we've been doing engagement and working in the community. So what we're really focused on is developing a safe, reliable, accessible, and equitable transportation system for the community that meets the needs that they've voiced to us over this time. So in terms of plan approach, I mentioned it's a bit different. We do start off with community engagement with all of our plans, but in this plan, we've really focused solely on that community engagement from the outset. So we've been in the community, working with stakeholders, doing interviews, a smaller focus group, and then various engagement events that Christian will detail later on. From that, we've taken all of the input that we've gotten and really distilled it into what the needs and goals are for the community, and that's what will drive the development of the plan in the later phases. Taking all of the information that we get from the community and bringing it together with the data that we have available as a city, then we can start taking a mix and match approach, if you will, toward making recommendations. So for example, if we see a consensus around an unsafe intersection, we can start making recommendations based on what the community has told us and what the data is telling us at that location. From there, we'll come out with a list of recommendations, and then we need some sort of prioritization in order to approach it in a rational manner. So we'll take basically project lists and identify how to prioritize those moving forward. We'll also identify some of the more complex projects and pull those out for additional review and additional engagement so that we can really do a deep dive into those that might be a little trickier to implement. And then finally, we'll come to the plan development. And that will include both those projects and also programmatic measures such as parking programs, policy recommendations, and also areas of the municipal code that we may want to take a closer look at. So as I mentioned, we've really been in the community since August, just about, and so far, we've been focusing in on that listening section and then going ahead and distilling into key themes. And now I'll turn it over to Christian, and he'll go over our engagement to date.
Great, thank you, Sue Ellen. So again, my name is Christian Olano. I'm with a community engagement consulting firm called Winter. We do community engagement up and down the Bay Area, and it's been a privilege to work with Sue Ellen on this project. So just to give you a glimpse, a high-level overview of what we've done to date, since and keep in mind that this is one of three phases of engagement, so we are not done, so this could increase, but since August of 2023 to December of 2023, we've engaged with over 200 north central residents in person. One thing to note, much of our engagement was also in Spanish, and I think, given the demographic of north central, it's important and critical for us to really cater engagement to the Spanish-speaking community as well, in addition to traditional engagement. We've done a total of three focus groups, four pop-up tabling events, two lived experience group meetings, and I'll touch on the lived experience group right after this slide. And as I mentioned, we have a great team of Spanish-speaking staff who are available at most of these events. So as I mentioned, as Sue Ellen mentioned before, at Winter, we really, in addition to the traditional community engagement that we do, which entails broad-based engagement, people we see walking down the street or who happen to be at a festival, such as National Night Out, Movies in the Park, and other events, we also hone in on doing deep engagement and targeted engagement as well. We have, we could not have done these multitude of different events without some key partners, such as those events I mentioned, staff, people past the faith community who work at and provide services at North Macedonia Church, who hosted an event for food distribution one weekday, and then the Community Baptist Church, also lived experience group members who are critical in helping support engagement, planning engagement, knowing who to reach out to, where, when, and where are the hubs where the community congregates, and then, of course, with the support of the North Central, Homeowners Association of North Central San Mateo Handsome. So as I mentioned, a little bit about the lived experience group for this project, due to the unique challenges, transportation challenges that north central faces, we brought in a new and different approach that adds on to the traditional engagement that we already conduct. This LEG, as we call the lived experience group, is composed of five community members representing a diversity of ages, races and ethnicities, unique lived experiences, people who have kids, people who have been longtime residents, who have lived there for over 35 years, seniors, and people who have just moved in as well, so to get a diversity of those experiences, and all who live in north central and who were selected for their connections to other residences and their dedication to improving transportation access, safety and mobility in north central. The LEG meets at a total of three stages. They've met twice, one to provide their input on needs, another to provide input on potential improvements, with the goal to bring their unique experiences and insights through collaboration and provide input on the plan that reflects the challenges and concerns that are raised by the north central residents that come to them on a regular basis about their concerns. So here are some photos. I think it's important for us to visually let you know and inform you of like what we've done. We've done quite a lot, and it's, again, a mixture of broad-based engagement, so doing intercept surveys or meeting people on the street at National Night Out back in August. You can see, we did a pop-up at MLK Park, Movies in the Park, speaking with children, parents, seniors, people of all disabilities that are coming up to our booth. As I mentioned, we worked with Macedonia Church at Claremont and Tilton at a food distribution, so understanding the experiences of people who go to the food distribution, who carries the carts of different abilities and who cross the street and understanding the challenges that they face when bringing food back and forth to their vehicles or if they live nearby. At Handsome, we did a pop-up meeting at their Neighborhood Association meeting in early November at the King Center as well, and we also did a series of focus groups with residences, meeting them where they were at to understand certain corridors and the challenges that experience. I think this one was, the one pictured here is at a residence, they were at Aho Street in Humboldt. And then we also did a really active engagement at a bus stop in front of Community Baptist Church. They usually serve hot cocoa on, I believe it was on Monday, early morning, so it got there was pretty cold and chilly, but we talked to, it was mostly a large Spanish-speaking community, so it serves as a main hub for that community and children that are going to various elementary and middle schools throughout the area. So more pictures here. So you can see, as I mentioned before, this is just a hone-in, that we had several broad-based experiences for people to engage, so meeting people where they were at, again, so for us, it's important to reduce the barrier for them to engage, and for us to go out there was important and critical for us in a variety of different languages. So this is, again, a National Night Out, the pop-up at Claremont and Tilton, and then in front of the bus stop, in front of Community Baptist Church. And then focus groups. One, doing a pop-in with Handsome, they dedicated about 45 minutes for us to, for Sue Ellen and I to do a presentation and really just listen. We are in Phase One, which is all about listening. We will always continue to listen about the needs throughout all the phases, but this is really the dedication and intent here. And then focus group with residents, you know, within walking distance of where they lived, at someone's residence. So I won't go into this in too much depth, but this is just to give you a sense, for every comment that we receive, we put it all into one Excel sheet, but any location-specific comments, we are in the process of mapping out. So this is just a draft, but you can see all the potential improvements that people provided as comments, all the critical areas that might be of challenge or concern. We are mapping them out, and that will be incorporated as we develop the plan. And then finally, this is, this is non-exhaustive, but, and this is not complete since we're just in Phase One, but as a recap of Phase One, here are some general themes from, that we received as summarizing from the themes that we've heard from community feedback thus far. So one, traffic safety concerns. First and foremost, safety is a big concern recurring across all, mentioned across all events that where we did engagement with residents expressing concern about speeding, parking congestion, narrow streets, and this posing a risk not just for pedestrians but also drivers as well. Visibility and turning safety. Many residents emphasize the need for better visibility through safe turning practices. There are sometimes overgrown shrubbery that, or trees that needed trimming, and enforcing no parking zones to improve safety for pedestrians and drivers alike. For safety infrastructure improvements, some people mentioned the addition of speed bumps, stop signs, flashing beacon crosswalks, enhanced safety in the neighborhood. For limited right-of-way, residents of, you know, with the narrow streets in north central, residents mentioned the need to create safe, creating safety congestion and other issues around parking. Many residents specifically mentioned the addition of bike lanes created a parking deficit for a neighborhood already burdened with limited parking. Neighborhood aesthetics, so this also came up in multiple occasions. Residents mentioned that they noticed an increase in residents parking on their lawns or unpaved sections of their properties throughout north central. And this is really, and I'll touch on this at the end, but the need, people have pride in north central, and this kind of diminishes their sense of pride in terms of their neighborhood aesthetics and identity. Public transit improvements, there were demands for improved public transit options, including frequent, more frequent bus services, extended routes, and better access to the Caltrain stations. Enforcement of regulations, so residents mentioned the need for enforcing regulations related to speeding, no parking zones, and littering to address safety and cleanliness concerns. And then even though this wasn't under necessarily the purview or the scope of transportation, I think it was important to note that many residents use this as a vessel to share their concerns around illegal activities and enforcement, which could coincide with some of the things around transportation, which include concerns about illegal dumping, fireworks, gunshots, and street racing activities in the neighborhood, with a need for more law enforcement. And then, as I mentioned before, everyone we talked to, no one wanted to move out of north central. Everyone loved the community that they lived in, and they want to see improvements, and that was really heartening to see and hear. Many shared appreciation for MLK Park, the center, the hubs that it creates, the connections. So people who had lived here for decades, people who just moved in, they love the neighborhood, and it's something they didn't want to see improvements for. So I will end there and pass it back to Sue Ellen.
All right, thank you. So with all the information that we've gotten through, all the engagement that we've been doing in the community, what we're doing next is really taking a mix and match approach to the concerns that we've heard, that we've really begun to marry with the data that we have available from various sources. And so you saw the map that we're working on in terms of, you know, geolocating all of the safety concerns with specific locations, and you can see things starting to coalesce there. And what we can do with that is utilize a toolbox of measures, very similar to what the city is developing in the local roadway safety plan, in order to sort of combat some of those issues. So for example, speeding is something that we heard a lot about, so looking at things like raised crosswalks, like speed cushions, and stop signs can be something to combat speeding. The narrow streets, limited right-of-way, one thing that can be evaluated there is making one-way roads, and that's something that came up a lot in the outreach. Sometimes when you make a one-way road, though, you have to couple that with other improvements, because if you have a little more space to travel, people see that as an invitation to go a little faster. So then you have to couple that with traffic calming to keep speeds down. So really, what we're looking at is where these themes are bubbling up, identifying the specific improvements, and figuring out what the trade-offs are for each of those improvements. We did bring this to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission last Wednesday, and so to share feedback from comments from commissioners. The first was to consider additional outreach to transportation users with mobility challenges, those who get around in different ways or have difficulty in moving around. The second is to highlight outreach to school districts and families. As part of this outreach, we really did work with the school districts, but to really focus on our work there and bring that out, because school families in the neighborhood have unique transportation issues. The third comment was to include programmatic measures to encourage high school students, particularly at San Mateo High School, to walk and bike to school. We had notes about traffic congestion related to student transportation to school, so that was one comment from the SNI Commission. And then finally, to work with our partners for additional transit service to serve the neighborhood. So in terms of schedule, we are pretty far along in the schedule, but to date, what we've been working on is really that listening and engagement. So for the next few months, what we're going to be doing is identifying those recommended projects to counteract the concerns that we're hearing, develop the programmatic measures and policy recommendations, and then bring that together into a draft plan. During that time, we'll also be doing additional outreach in the neighborhood. We have a community workshop coming up at the King Center on March 28th. We have a Spanish workshop starting at 5:30, and then an English speaker link workshop starting at 7:00. So we'll have information going out about that on the city's social media channels, and we also have flyers about that as well. As part of the priority projects, again, we haven't developed any projects yet, so depending on what those priority projects look like, we'll be doing some focused engagement around those. If it's a corridor project, that may look like door-to-door outreach to get neighbors involved. It may look like a pop-up on a corner. Really depends on what those improvements and recommendations come out looking like. So again, this is an informational update. General feedback is very much welcomed, and Christian and I are available for any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Let me look at Councilmember Lorraine, since you're to my left.
Good to be seen. Thank you, Mayor, through the mayor. Thank you, Sue Ellen and Christian, for your presentation. I may have a question or two. I wondered if you might say a little more about what was shared, I think, a little more clearly in the packet, brought up perhaps just a bit in the presentation about speeding issues that were noted by the community, and then how staff and the consultant supported the community's comments with data in the form of average speeds, and maybe, yeah, yes, please.
Sure. So we have gotten feedback on speeding at a number of locations throughout the neighborhood. And I will say that while we are speaking about north central in particular, it's not dissimilar from reports that we get elsewhere in the city as well. I think that there's a sense that speeding is a concern elsewhere. So in terms of quantifying the feedback that we're getting, in some locations, we do have speed data from our traffic engineering team. In some cases, we can correspond with the San Mateo Police Department to determine if they've quantified it. In the defining needs and concerns deliverable that was attached to the staff report, we did look at average speeds in the neighborhood. And that was really to determine if speeding is a more global issue, or if it's more specific to certain motorists or the few motorists. So in looking at the average speed, we can see if it's really an issue that's pervasive, and a lot of people are going over the speed limit, in which case, perhaps there are elements of the roadway that need to be modified in order to correct for that. If by and large, the speed limits are at or below the posted speed limit, then that indicates that it's motorist behavior, and there are other measures to look at in relation to that.
Thank you. On parking, there was a parking inventory conducted as part of this work to date, and I wondered if you could speak a little more about maybe where, you know, to the extent that we've determined this so far, you know, what, I guess in a similar way to what you just did when talking about average miles per hour on speeds and streets, and what different numbers and findings can tell us what's happening. I'll try to flesh out this question in an admittedly verbose way, but, you know, I guess one thought I had was, you know, would the city be considering a target amount of parking capacity within the neighborhood? We see in the report that, you know, in the current inventory, an average amount seems to be about 75% neighborhood-wide. And then, we also see that average coming as the result of some streets that have some extra capacity and some that appear to be almost completely full at peak times, 90 to 100% capacity. And do you anticipate, maybe, so like to wrap that up, you know, what, will this plan be able to come up with some potential action items to maybe help balance out the overall parking capacity, and do we have a target in mind?
In speaking in industry standards, the occupancy target is generally 85%, and that translates to on a roadway, there's usually, as you're going, one or two spaces that are available, just roughly. The city has not adopted a specific occupancy goal for on- or off-street parking, but in the industry, it does usually trend toward 85%, and that means when you need a space, there's one available. While the average occupancy was calculated for the neighborhood as a whole, that's not a number that we would tend to use. We do look at roadways and segments. And in response to the question about if the plan would identify measures, in the programmatic section, it will identify suggestions in terms of policy measures, programs, et cetera, such as, there was a lot of interest in exploring a permit program that would be a new type of permit for the city. It doesn't fit the current residential parking permit program parameters that we have right now, so it may be something that needs to be fit for the neighborhood, or other options such as parking opportunities for small businesses. We've heard a lot of feedback about business vehicles being on street, like small gardening businesses and that sort of thing. So I think that there are a lot of different avenues that we can explore, but to sum up, yes, the plan intends to include those policy and programmatic approaches.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate information about transit use, getting some input from the community about interest in increasing access to transit. But, you know, understanding that we don't necessarily control what Samtrans can do or would do, can we talk a little bit about what, I guess, like firstly, whether a plan such as this can offer Samtrans something that maybe they wouldn't otherwise have found about the neighborhood that might convince them? Indeed, there could be interest in value and increasing access, and I assume we'll be sharing that information with them, and do we have, how much do we think we might be able to move the needle with a plan like this?
We can certainly share the feedback with Samtrans, in particular, the location-specific comments may be useful to them. Samtrans did just wrap up their Reimagine Samtrans effort, which looked at the full bus network and really rebalanced how they were allocating funding. Some routes were eliminated and others were made more robust in order to answer to demand, and that's both demand that's being, that is current for the buses and also future demand. So in terms of north central specifically, they did add, I believe, an additional bus stop on El Camino to better serve the neighborhood. That is, that is quite far for some residents in the neighborhood. But having just been through that process, I don't know how much we can influence Samtrans to take another look at their service. It can perhaps give the city information in order to discuss additional options with Samtrans for the future or for city programs down the line.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Have we lost connection on the video? Because all I'm seeing, I'm not seeing the city council anymore.
Yes, Councilmember Hedges, we are troubleshooting a video issue with our system. You can continue with your remarks, but we will be... You can continue with your remarks, but we will be troubleshooting.
Okay, well, I probably put a tie on, and I didn't need to.
But you have new glasses.
Actually, they're a little strong, I have to admit. So, Suellen, you did a great job on this report. I really appreciate it. For someone who lived for nine years in North Central, and actually, the first four years I was here, biked everywhere. I was the only one that biked to work. I was the only one that biked to union meetings, long before other people were biking who were adults. And so I'm very interested in this. But we also, in this city, represent everyone. And I remember the really troubled people that came to the meeting, city council meetings after 270 parking places were removed, and it's created problems with people parking on their lawns. And I know from my own experience in my neighborhood, the only vehicle thefts we've had have been work trucks with tools racks on them. And there were four out of my neighborhood. And so this is a worry for people, and we need to balance what we're doing with the bike lanes. And I'm wondering how we're going to do that without removing parking and still, or at least overly removing parking. And the other question I have, have we made plans that we're going to remove parking to what we do if disabled people have disabled parking spots in front of their homes? And the other question I would have for you is, have we thought about going to the state for photo radar for some of these neighborhoods, especially in North Central where so many of the streets are narrow, to try to slow people down? Just the sign that you have photo radar would probably slow everybody down.
I just want to confirm, Councilmember Hedges, that I heard your comments properly. The first question was, what can we do in projects where we're looking to remove parking if there are accessible parking spaces on street?
Yeah, and how we dumb down the number of parking spaces we have to remove. This is really rough on people in working-class neighborhoods that may have people that have two or three jobs, or maybe more, within a household. And especially in North Central where, if there is a garage, there are usually much older garages that are narrow, and people have, cannot park in them. They may have driveways that they can use. We have to figure out ways to accommodate people.
Understood. And we did hear that feedback throughout our efforts in the neighborhood. In terms of really reducing the number of parking spaces that need to be removed for a project, that's a practice that we already have in Public Works and in the city. It's not our goal to be removing parking. Our goal is to really balance the needs of all users. In this plan, we are looking at existing infrastructure and proposed projects for the future. But again, we don't have recommended improvements at this time, so I can't speak to parking removal specifically. But we do aim to really maintain as much as we can. But that's not, you know, never our goal to do so. In terms of accessible parking on street, we have not been in a situation where the parking removal removes an accessible parking space, I believe. We did offer accessible parking spaces on street in North Central free of charge, and that's something that we do offer citywide. But in the North Central neighborhood, we offered that at no cost. And that's where a resident can request an accessible parking space on street. It may not be directly in front of their home because it needs to be adjacent to an ADA curb ramp, but we do make efforts to install as close as we can.
Okay, and I really support anything we can do to slow people down. I appreciate your comments on that. The streets are so narrow that aren't the arteries there, that it's a real problem. And I agree with your comment that doing one-way streets will probably pick up the speed on those streets. There is some benefit for having narrow streets. It does really slow people down. Thank you. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Good to see you all. And thank you for the report out. This is culmination of a lot of advocacy from the neighborhood who've been asking for decades to dedicate resources to our neighborhood, to analyze and assess our needs. And so the way that this has involved community has been, I think, a success, and it will continue to be a success. And I know that there are gaps in outreach, and I, that have surfaced through this process, and I'm curious, you know, as we continue the outreach process, where are you seeing those gaps, and what is the plan to address them?
I can start, and then Christian can fill in. We have made efforts through the outreach that we've done thus far on the plan to learn from how we've done outreach before, and take the lessons learned and move forward. So in working with community members in the neighborhood who have established networks, that allowed us to really get information out in a way that we haven't had access before, and we're so appreciative for that. In terms of gaps that have come up, one of the SNI commissioners raised concerns about missing feedback from those with mobility challenges. And what our hope is, is when we are doing general outreach and making events open to all, that we're getting a subset of the community. But her comments raised a gap that we have not necessarily specifically outreach to a certain community, and we will evaluate how we can do that moving forward.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think this process is, one thing about our process with Winter is that we're iterative. I think this meeting itself, that SIC commission meeting itself, is a platform and opportunity to adapt, and I think that's what we have planned. We have some focus groups that we have scope to do, that we haven't necessarily identified with a specific community yet here in North Central, but that's for reservation for instances like this where we do find gaps. So it's sort of, you know, we don't have it all fully fleshed out, but it's because of this, you know, we wanted to be sure that we had the opportunities to fill in the gaps and when they did appear. And we do have, as Suellen mentioned, the community workshop next Thursday in Spanish and English, one of two, and then in phase three, we'll have another one in North Central as well. So again, a mixture of broad-based, general public, common opportunities at these larger community meetings in addition to targeted outreach. And we welcome you to, not to put you on the spot, but email Suellen if you have any recommendations as well. I think she's listed as a project manager in all our outreach, so people can also engage in that vessel as well.
So, I mean, I second the suggestion for, you know, exploring deeper partnership opportunities with the school districts. I guess I'm wondering, you know, when we're structuring our pop-up events, are we also looking at pop-up events at the senior meal program days? Are we looking at pop-up events, you know, at the summer school registration day? You know, we have community members coming through the King Center en masse at peak, you know, peak times, and I would love to see us looking across our programmatic, you know, offerings, and looking, I mean, for example, one of our esteemed community members who has been a strong advocate for the senior, what's it called? Not acrobat, aerobic, the senior aerobic class, is here in the room. And so, you know, we can actually, we can do very targeted, localized outreach through our own Parks and Rec department, right? Because that is a very effective community hub. And so I'm just curious if we're looking, you know, if we're looking internally at leveraging these outreach opportunities in terms of our own database, our own registration process, our own programmatic offerings, as well as the external partners, like faith-based communities and the school districts, and the Koschlin Fellows? You know, I am, as you know, a part of a pioneer cohort of Koschlin Fellows that are civic leaders funded through the San Francisco Foundation that is dedicated to identifying community need in North Central. It would be wonderful to have you all come do a focus group with us Koschlin Fellows as well. So that is not so much a question, but a suggestion. I will also, I guess, big picture, my other question is, you know, just to put a little context into this, I've put a lot of eggs in this basket of complete streets and what it can accomplish. And there's a part of me that's a little bit concerned, and I want to raise this flag, that when we were talking about the grand vision of complete streets, we were talking about a comprehensive and an intersectional lens that can be applied to the neighborhood. And so there's a little bit of a question mark for me when, for example, I'll give you an example. I had easily six scooters stolen from the King Center. The King Center I love and frequent very often. But there's an issue of security of, in terms of, like, the security issues for our multimodal transit that are getting locked up in front of the King Center, which becomes a deterrent, right? A deterrent to multimodal transit. Am I going to bike there? If I bike there, will I lose my bike? Right? And so I just, I guess I want to raise that as a one example of an intersectional issue that is related to transit, but is not necessarily framed in this report out. And I want to offer that as an example of many intersectional issues that I see living in North Central. For example, on my walk downtown, I am only 5'4", I'm a relatively short person, I literally have to duck under a tree on the sidewalk to pass this section of the sidewalk, because the tree is, has a branch that's literally overhanging into the right-of-way that I, at 5'4", have to duck. So that's an intersectional issue that I raise around our urban forest, right? Our tree maintenance that impacts our walking experience. How is that being captured in this analysis? And I could go on. There are so many examples of, you know, the ways that we experience our streets. Like, one of the main issues that came up in the Public Works report out is stormwater drain systems. So I don't want us to put stormwater in a different category, because when the streets are flooded, we can't walk, bike, or drive down those streets, right? And so I just, I legitimately am asking, because I think that this is a really important effort, and we want to get it right for the neighborhood. And this level of analysis has never, literally never been done. It's never been resourced specifically for North Central. And I want, I really want us to look at the methodology and comprehensiveness of our thinking and assessment to capture all of the different intersections. So I'll stop there. That's my, that's sort of my, that's my question, is how are we doing that? Are we missing things? Is this analysis framed to capture those types of intersections? And if not, then what is our plan to do so?
I think you've raised a really good point, and that's something that we've heard through our engagement in the community. Through distilling the feedback into themes, we tried to capture some of those things that are really outside of what would be in a traditional transportation plan, like the need for tree trimming, Christian had mentioned, and also concerns around illegal activity. But to take a more comprehensive approach, like what you're talking about, we would be looking at rescoping the effort, and I would invite our public director, Public Works Director Matt Fabry to weigh in, you know, regarding stormwater systems, et cetera, and resources.
I think, yeah, Public Works Director Matt Fabry, I think inevitably, yes, we're going to miss certain things. I think it's very difficult to encompass every one of these intersectionality things that you've talked about, but I think it's a goal that we should have to try to look at those. I think, you know, some of our challenges that we may, we may not hear those things from the community, and we may not necessarily have all of the information ourselves to know where the problems are. And so like with the example of the stormwater issue, you know, we're going to be updating the storm drain master plan, and we'll likely learn a lot more through that process about where some of our problems are. And if people didn't necessarily experience, you know, challenges with flooded streets, they may not have brought that up. I think when we look at implementing a comprehensive program, though, in the future for trying to, you know, resource and fund implementation of some of the recommendations that are going to come out of this plan, that are going to come out of the citywide complete streets plan, that are going to come out of the local roadway safety plan, is that we need to be looking at how can we comprehensively integrate some of our efforts that can help fund some of these things. So I think when we look at some of the stormwater issues, we're going to be looking at, how can we address, you know, some of our complete streets needs at the same time that we're doing stormwater projects, or vice versa? Can we address stormwater issues at the same time that we're doing some of our complete streets implementation? And that allows us to bring in different pots of funding that can help to support some of the projects and get more stuff done. And I think that's going to be the real challenge with all of this, is that we don't have currently the dedicated resources that it's going to take to really, you know, significantly move the needle in terms of implementation, you know, in a short amount of time. So we're looking at how we can advance that, but I think that's part of what we need to do, is that the intersectionality piece of it brings different pots of funding and different pieces of the pie together that maybe allow us to do more than if we're just looking for a specific pot of complete streets type of funding. So I think it's a challenge that we're going to have to wrestle with. I don't have the best answer for you in terms of how we're going to do that, but I think that we can continue to think about that as we're going forward with developing the, you know, the next phases of the project in terms of recommendations and whatnot. And it's definitely something that we'll be looking at closely in terms of how do we move forward with all these plans in terms of implementation, and trying to set aside dedicated funding to move things forward.
Okay, then I do have a follow-up, because, you know, state law SB 1000 requires the city to do planning for our community equity priority areas. And part of the scoping for the set priority that we have in our general plan is to do analysis of community need for North Central. And so I actually think that it should be on the table to re-scope and expand this effort, because we have the possibility of actually doing this outreach much more effectively and comprehensively once, right? Instead of piecemeal over multiple years. And that, and there's potentially a way to do that, that, you know, that could better leverage those funding opportunities that our Director Fabry was talking about, right? We don't want, I guess, I guess I'm, I...
I'm happy to respond to that point.
Yes, do.
So, right now, we've already been doing the community engagement for the North Central Complete Streets over the last, you know, since August. And so want to make sure that we continue on that path, because as we hear from the community, people are awaiting all these projects to come up. And so we have to be effective and really work through, and I think we're already moving forward in this area. But I think you bring up a really good point, to really look at what are the other layers and impacts, and how do the plans all mesh with one another and the focus area? Couple items that you just brought up, you know, it's great to know, I didn't know that the scooters are being stolen at the King Center. That's something I had to ask our chief to look into with his staff. Another area of just walking downtown, you know, the community is our eyes and ears. As staff, we can't be everywhere, just as a councilist. So if you let us know what's going on, I think we'll be, you know, I'm all about having this organization be caring and responsive. And so if we know about it, we'll go ahead and, you know, respond to that. That's something that we have to look at from a safety perspective. So I think that's how I would say, is that totally, I totally hear your comments and acknowledge that. And so we'll keep moving forward with this, but we'll also look to see how we can, you know, focus on all our future plans, especially with the general plan that's coming up this evening, right?
Yes.
And the implementation and all that. So that's forthcoming as well. I want to be just thoughtful, I'm looking at the clock here, at 6:00. I'm looking at the clock here at 6:19 through the mayor's. So I just want to give enough time. I know we had a DEI item too here.
Yes, okay. So then my last question is, as a data point, I think it would be really helpful to look, to pull the data on what are some of the subsidized services that are being utilized? And what are subsidized services that are being offered? And then what is the rate of utilization? Right? And then I would really appreciate a lot of transparency about the language accessibility uptake for these outreach. It's not enough to offer it. Are the people actually showing up and using it? Right? That, to me, is the real metric of success, that we're offering, you know, we're offering this outreach opportunity in a language, you know, linguistically accessible format, and it's being utilized.
Yeah, with regards to that note, I think that's why the lived experience group is so essential. Some, a couple of members of the lived experience group are really connected with the Spanish-speaking community. And we've done one focus group specifically with one of the lived experience group members residents, all in Spanish with about 10 participants. Our first event for the San Mateo Complete Streets Plan was actually in North Central before the North Central project existed. So it was in tandem with the San Mateo Foster City Unified School District. So we had two focus groups for that effort, all in Spanish. Both of them were in Spanish. And at all the variety of pop-ups, we have, I can't put a number to it, but I would dare say 25 to 50% of the people we spoke with at the pop-ups were in Spanish. I can get more hard data for our final report, but just to give you a glimpse of where we're at. And next Thursday's workshop, we are having one specifically in Spanish. So could use a lot of help with outreach for that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'm going to try to go real quick. I've got three or four points here. I'll go through it, and then we can go through the answers. Okay. The first is, you mentioned the idea of business permits, and I've heard that a lot from neighbors in North Central. There are a tremendous amount of blue collar jobs, which are contractors, gardeners, and food trucks is another. There's a lot of food trucks in North Central. I frequent them sometimes. But, you know, the question would be, could we have business permits that were specific to that type of parking? As we develop neighborhoods, could we take neighborhood, like streets like Amflit, which is primarily industrial anyways, and have it so that from 6 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning, it's business parking only? Like, there shouldn't be cars on that street? Business permit parking. So I think that that's an exciting prospect, and I'm glad to hear that it's been brought up. Demographics, there are a tremendous amount of seniors in this neighborhood, and I've heard from a lot of them. I think it would be a good idea, if you haven't already, to reach out to Samtrans to see if Ready Wheels can give you some specific contacts. I believe, but I don't know the address. There's also a home for development of disabled people in that neighborhood. Would be good to outreach to them. And also, I think a couple of the churches also provide van service for seniors. So it sounds like you're already talking to most of them, but that's just a couple of suggestions to make sure we're covering our bases. And then the last point I had was, I think that this is moving forward, but the College Park and Fiesta Garden campuses are swapping. And so I would suggest that we're looking also right now at Fiesta Gardens traffic and see what does that kind of mean when we overlay that where College Park's traffic was? I think Fiesta Gardens is a bigger campus, but I don't actually know that categorically. But just suggesting to make sure we're following up on all those.
Okay, I guess that was a group of comments we put together. No, no, that's totally great. Yeah, a couple of things. Did you see within the living experience groups versus the pop-ups different feedback or intensity of feedback? Because you were going at it from a very different way?
I can start. You're the expert, though. Yes. The pop-ups, we did some, to Councilmember Lee's comment, we did some in coordination with the police department at National Night Out and the Movies in the Park. Those are very quick conversations usually, and you want to try to be targeting what you're asking to be a very quick, tell us what you think, where do you feel comfy, where do you not? And those are very quick interactions, but allow for more quantity of interaction at a focus group or at the lived experience group. It's opportunity to really get deep into the conversation and get more, you know, build more of a relationship so that people are comfortable sharing things and sharing more than they would be able to in a pop-up event. So having both gives very different feedback, but both types of feedback are really valuable.
Yes, and I would just add that at the lived experience group meetings that they also commented on the engagement process itself. So giving us guidance on, you know, the different types of experiences or questions that could be asked to elicit, you know, what types of challenges and concerns people encounter and experience. I think more or less, it is very similar. It's just at the lived experience group meetings and the focus groups, we get to dig in a little bit more in the specifics of, you know, the locations and different anecdote and experiences.
And that's exactly what I would expect to hear, so that's good. And I would just ask that as you continue to do outreach, particularly when you're doing the lived experience groups, you spend, really be very thoughtful about how you get those people there. And then analyzing the cross-sections of the young people versus the old people, the, you know, all the different segments that you're going to do. Then the second question is, this complete streets plan for North Central really came out, as Councilmember Lee said, out of some very fierce feedback that council and staff received about the bike lanes in North Humboldt. And really got everyone to say we need to go more focused, which is a great outcome. But I continue to hear that is the bike lanes versus the parking is one major issue. Public safety, as you said, was another one. And I also hear from a lot of neighbors that they're concerned about neighborhood aesthetics and that because parking has disappeared, people wind up parking on their lawns. And my question is, those three in particular, did you hear that level of intensity like before? Did you learn new things from it? And are you going to keep it sort of top of mind as you continue?
All three of those are part of the, you know, the list of buckets, if you will, of information that we heard at each event. So I think that what we heard really matches what you're bringing up, and those key themes are at the forefront as we're moving forward into projects and programs.
Great. And just one last one echoing Deputy Mayor Newsom. You know, I do not live in North Central, but I go there a lot. And I hear from a lot of people downtown who come from North Central that food trucks have become just a huge issue. From a health perspective, from a neighborhood, just what it feels like to live there, from a crowding perspective. So did you get that kind of feedback when you talked to people? And how are you going to incorporate that as you're going forward?
Yes, we got that feedback. We saw that in action. And that would be included in the programmatic and perhaps policy approaches.
Okay, great. Well, then I will stop my questions here. And why don't we go to public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. If you are attending in council chambers and wish to speak on this item, please deliver a yellow request to speak slip. We will be calling the last speaker. So if you could please deliver those slips to me as soon as you can. If you're attending via Zoom remotely, please raise your hand. Okay, Madam Mayor. We have received a total of 11 requests to speak on this item. We look to the council.
Two minutes? Yeah.
So we will start with the individuals in chambers first and move to our remote speakers. So our first speaker will be Rick Sakuta. And with, to help with efficiency, if I call your name, please line up along the right-hand side. So our first speaker will be Rick Sakuta, followed by Nicole Fernandez and Trina Pierce.
Do you say we have two minutes?
Two. Two minutes.
I don't know if I can put this in two minutes. Anyway, let me say that one of the issues was the bike lanes on Humboldt. Those are part of the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan. They're installed in fall of 2022, much to the surprise of the North Central residents. In March of 2023, at a city council meeting on Complete Streets, North Central advocated for the removal of the bike lanes. It was decided that the bike lane situation would be split off and become its own project, which is part of what we're here now. But we want to look at the bike lanes separately so we can get some resolution on it for those residents. It's been a year. Nothing's been done. These people don't have any parking. You're going to hear, and you've heard, you guys already know what the issue is. There's very, there's been no survey taken on the usage of the bike lanes. Now, I go down there all the times. You all do too. There's nobody out there. Every time I go there, I take pictures. I don't have one bike. Rich Hedges came out with us one time. We walked the Humboldt area for two hours, met with Claire Mack, residents in the area, plus residents from District Four. Saw no bikes. So I can assure you, if there were bikes on that bike lane, we'd have 100 studies showing that there's 50 bike trips per hour there. So, and I'm assuming you guys have been down there yourselves. And so this is an equity priority community. That means significant concentrations of underserved populations, households with low income, below the federal poverty level, limited English proficiency, seniors, people with disabilities, single-parent families, severely rent burden, distrust of authority, and afraid of retaliation. So maybe you're not going to get 300 people with T-shirts here, but the people need their parking back. And I think Councilmember Lee so much has said that at a public meeting, that it would have been different if the bicycle lanes had been part of
Thank you.
The streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Nicole Fernandez, followed by Trina Pierce and Connie Weiss.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Nicole Fernandez. I am a 12-year resident of North Central. I'm also a city council candidate for District Two, North Shoreview and North Central, but I speak today as a resident. Thank you, Sue Ellen and your team for your hard work. I appreciate all of your efforts. I'm also very concerned about the street lighting in North Central and the safety of our pedestrians. I'm also concerned about parking. I'm supportive of the bike lanes and alternative transportation when it's done well, like on North San Mateo Drive. But unfortunately, I don't believe that the North Humboldt project was done with enough community input. I would respectfully ask pausing any further bike lanes in North Central at this time. We are an under-resourced community of color, and I truly feel that our voice, the North Central residents, are not being centered here. We must move forward with, if we must move forward with further bike lanes, I would respectfully request that it be done as a six-month pilot during the school year to accurately study how frequently these bike lanes are used. Nothing about us without us, especially for our North Central community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before we take the next speaker, just to announce to those attending remotely, our last speaker on this item will be Jordan Grimes. Next speaker is Trina Pierce, followed by Connie Weiss and Michael Reagan.
Good evening to the council members and Mayor Lisa Nash. Thank you guys for this opportunity. I come here kind of speaking for my neighborhood. So North Central does not oppose the bike lanes. North Central opposes that they cannot park in front of their houses. They have to walk blocks and blocks away. The money was funded from CDG Group. I didn't get it right, but it starts with C D. And it was said that we would be provided with lights, streets. None of that has happened. You just, the streets just started being fixed just this last, about six months ago. And that some of, a lot of the people in North Central have been there for years. I've been there for over 60 years. So we're, a lot of people there are not comfortable with the city. I'll just put it like that. They don't trust you guys. They say things because we're not being treated right out there. So that's one of the reasons that they don't come up. We had over 62% that said no. And the bike lane was moved anyway. And a lot of them said, oh, they were out there the very next day after they said, you know, changed them out. Those bumpouts that are there, they're causing more problems, and people are almost getting hit. Because when you come to the bumpout, the bicyclist has to go into the main lane. When they go on the main lane, people are almost hitting them because they have to go around the bumpout. So it just makes no sense. And I'm not sure why it's not against the law that when people have a disability, that that blue is on the corner. I mean, the blue is there because they can't walk that far. But now you're telling them to walk to the corner. How is that not, how is that unlawful? That shouldn't be. So, and I just ask that you kind of have a meeting with seniors only at King Center, if you can. I know it's during the day, but it would be so much better they can't get out at night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Connie Weiss, followed by Michael Reagan and Middy Swire.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and council. So I thank you so much for having this study session tonight. I think no matter where you live in San Mateo, it was horrifying to see two years ago hundreds of parking spaces removed on Humboldt with 60% of the community saying no, they needed their parking. So you always wondered, like, when is that going to happen to me? So I'm here tonight to say, this is a San Mateo issue. We need to pull out the parking on Humboldt and make sure it returns. I feel like it's getting lost in this complete streets plan and that it will take another several years for any action to happen. And I know the city is very busy. But the meeting was February 22, 2022. The slide said 60% of the neighborhood was against pulling parking. The vote was taken, and on February 23, 2022, the bike lanes were painted in. It moved lightning fast. And so I'm asking you to look at being lightning fast about putting the parking back in for residents and for all of us in San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Reagan, followed by Middy Swire and Allison McQueen.
Good evening. I guess a little history. I'm Michael Reagan. I live on 31st. I don't live in the North, in the North Central area, but I work in the area quite a bit. I, as a, going back, I actually sat on the Bicycle Citizens Group. And the goal was to establish a Bicycle Master Plan that would connect all of San Mateo. And it was quite a group. We, Sue Ellen led the group, and we did, I thought, a wonderful job. At the time, I don't remember Humboldt or that street being denied the parking or parking was part of it. I knew a bike lane was going through there. And if you know the area at all, there's basically three ways to get from Peninsula down into the central part of San Mateo. There's Humboldt, Delaware, and San Mateo Drive. Otherwise, there's really no other way to get from that area back and forth. But the complications is the infrastructure of the North Central area. One of my recommendations was to try to eliminate the streets, the two-way streets, and put more of a one-way street in to accommodate the bikes, putting in some speed bumps to lower the speed limit. As you all know, you really can't go two ways. So the safety aspect would be improved. But the fact that you've taken away the parking from the citizens there, I think is a huge mistake that needs to be rectified. It's, just quickly going back in history, it used to be a single-family neighborhood until you guys changed it, not you, but the city council, allowed apartment buildings to go in, which even increased the parking problems in the area years ago. And I do feel... And I, I do feel that we, we need to give the parking back to the citizens. I think that's what they want.
Thank you.
And I think that's what this engagement should be accomplishing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Midi Swire, followed by Allison McQueen and Elizabeth Kiowa.
Hi, this is Midi. I'm not sure what that means. Thank you to council, and thanks to Sue Ellen and our team for great work on the outreach and for the initiative. First, I'm going to quote Kevin Simpson, who actually lives right on Humboldt. Unfortunately, he was pretty sick today, so he couldn't come, and I will read his comment. He basically says that he lives right on Humboldt. He sees people biking on the bike lanes around San Mateo High School, quote, "all day and all night." Need more, he said he wants more enforcement for cars parked in the bike lane, which would help adoption, and he supports the bike lane, doesn't support changes to make it a one-way street. He would like actually more outreach to those in the bike community that bike along Humboldt. He does so, and he never was outreach to. I've heard a lot of talk about food trucks and such, and I think there, this should be a broad thing, but I really want to bring it back to Complete Streets studies are about safety and making sure that the streets are safe for everybody. And I don't think that's been talked enough, enough. Again, my kids go to San Mateo High School. A 13-year-old girl was hit on Delaware in front of the district office last fall. My daughter's friend was hit crossing the street when I was picking her up one day, and we had a serious crash with a female student a couple of years ago at an intersection. Too many kids are scared of biking and walking to school. As a parent, I do not let my kids to do, do that. As a result, you have a bunch of 16, eight-year-old kids driving to school every day, increasing congestion in this area, making it the most dangerous neighborhood in all of San Mateo. Let's not forget that. Palo Alto has 60% of kids of this age biking and walking to school. I'd say it's probably a fraction of that. The traffic and danger is getting worse. We just widened Highway 101, putting more cars there, more cars racing on Poplar to get onto the highway. The bike lanes have actually, I think, made the streets safer when I walk around. It's, makes the street more narrow, and it makes it safer for pedestrians, not just those who bike. And in terms of photo enforcement, I'm glad Councilman Hedges brought that up. We actually took out a red light camera, I believe, on Humboldt about five years ago. So, the city's really got to walk the walk if they're going to make it safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Allison McQueen, followed by Elizabeth Kiowa.
Good evening. I bike and travel regularly through North Central as I live in Northshoreview. We have a fantastic bike pedestrian overpass that connects the Northshoreview and North Central neighborhoods to the Humboldt Bike Lanes via Monte Diablo. Just today, I saw a parent at a school event who used the pedestrian overpass to walk from North Central to Northshoreview. We need these bike and pedestrian connectors between our neighborhoods. The new bike lanes are a very important north-south connector as we build out our bicycle and pedestrian network in San Mateo. I feel so much safer biking through North Central with the new bike lanes than before, and the new lanes give parents the confidence to send their children to school using a bicycle. Next week, I am teaching a student how to bike to San Mateo High School from Northshoreview to prepare for his freshman year next year to use a bike instead of being driven to school. He is really excited to transit to school on his own. The bike lanes on Humboldt are a vital connector for students to transit safely to San Mateo High School and to transit between neighborhoods in San Mateo. Safety of our students and citizens should be our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker in chambers will be Elizabeth.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I've lived in the North Central area for almost 60 years. And I like to echo the first gentleman that spoke. I totally agree with what he said. But I have this issue where I'm thinking that these plans are being brought to the North Central from people that are not quite aware of what's going on in San Mateo, North Central especially. And I think a lot of times, we probably need to go backward, have the people in the community plan, and see what is really needed based on what they're seeing on a daily basis. And from there, they can come in, or the bike people come in. I think maybe that needs to be proposed. I have, because I've lived there so long, there's so many issues that I see. There's that no right turn on Third Avenue. That is completely crazy. Why would you not turn right on Third Avenue on Humboldt, from Humboldt, to make a right turn to going toward El Camino? Does not make any sense. Lot of people makes right turn. It says not to make a right turn, but I see police officers making a right turn all the time. So that's there. This photo radar that was mentioned, I'm not sure what that means, but I feel like my privacy will be invaded with a, with a photo radar around the area. I don't think that would, that's, that's an issue. The storm, rainstorm, when it rains, it rains.
Thank you.
And I've been there to clean, clean, literally clean it.
Thank you.
So the water would go through. So, a lot of, lot of mess.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
A lot of mess.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Ballard. Rick, please unmute your mic.
Hi, it's council. I'm Rick Ballard. I'm a resident of North Central. And I'd like to address a few things that have come up, but my high-level request is that we build more bike lanes instead of removing them, and focus on pedestrian safety as well. And to first, the bike lane utilization question that keeps coming up. I hear people say Humboldt lane utilization shows them to be a failure. Our city has very few good bike lanes, and we need a critical mass of bike infrastructure in order to make the city bikeable. So we need like additional lanes and traffic calming to make it accessible to more people. Otherwise, people won't even use the number we have right now. Downtown San Mateo, Caltrain, Demonté, Burning, Burlingame are so close. We have so many businesses and services, not much further. So, an e-bike can really be a very viable car replacement in this neighborhood for many people. It works for me. I almost never need to take a car. But I'm a very confident biker. Most people can't do that without better biking infrastructure. I live on Delaware Street and regularly see people biking on the sidewalks there and on, and on sidewalks of nearby streets. So that, that shows a serious pent-up demand for bikers. But we have the lack of infrastructure to make them feel safe to actually be on the street. I'd also suggest to improve cycling utilization. Some education might be part of the story. How can we help people get access to bikes and e-bikes, know about incentive programs, learn how to use them effectively? I think there's a big opportunity for the city to provide community assistance. Many people are intimidated by biking and don't know how to maintain them, but that's something we could help with. Finally, on bike lane trade-offs, aesthetics has come up. Let me ask you, which city is more aesthetically pleasing? One choked with cars, or one where we've built in enough infrastructure that we have a better mix of cycling, pedestrians on this street saying hello to their neighbors, cyclists waving to their neighbors, which is a thing that happens when you're on a bike, and fewer cars driving around? I think cities with bikers and pedestrians are far more beautiful and neighborly than cars everywhere that I can see. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Dave Cohen. Dave, please unmute your mic.
Working on it.
Dave, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay. Dave Cohen, speaking for Ethics San Mateo. First of all, we do not, contrary to some, somebody's beliefs, we do not oppose or support bike lanes in general. We're simply concerned about the lack of follow-through by city council on a decision they made to revisit Humboldt Street bike lanes because of community complaints about parking and other issues. We followed up, we, we wrote a Ethics Watch, which essentially is a document that says, we're watching something because we have a concern about whether the government is going to really do what they say they were going to do. We followed up recently, and Brad Underwood, the Public Works Director, wrote us that council neither asked them or provided funding for them to do anything about Humboldt Street bike lanes. We would like to see city council follow through with their statements and actually act. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this item will be Jordan Grimes. Jordan, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, council and staff. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. Really appreciate the hard work, both of staff and the consultants on this initiative. I want to say a few things about what I've heard here tonight. I heard someone say earlier this evening that it's horrifying to see parking spaces removed. To me, what's horrifying is to see people being maimed, severely injured, and dying because we don't have adequate infrastructure necessary to protect those who cannot afford a car and must ride a bike. I'm a lifelong resident of this city. In that time, I've experienced numerous close calls while riding my bike, both to and from school as a child, when our household could not afford two cars and my parents worked, to now, earlier this year, when I was nearly run off the road on Delaware, after a car decided to pass me illegally, and I was forced to have the bike lane into the street due to the lane being blocked by another car. I have heard people say tonight that they're not opposed to safety and that they're not opposed to the bike lanes just to the loss of parking. But the reality is, you have to choose, and prioritizing parking over safe infrastructure means you're doing just that. Finally, one point of agreement I do find with opposing speakers, we absolutely need more outreach to North Central to build trust that the neighborhood understandably does not have with the city after years of neglect and disinvestment. The city should especially do outreach to the many, many lower-income residents who do not drive, and to the disabled residents who cannot drive, and prioritize their needs and input. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. I will close public comment now, bring it back to the council. I think everyone has given comments. Are there any final comments?
Well, I, I think that we've come a long way, and, and we have a ways to go. And, and I think, you know, based on the feedback that we got in chambers tonight and along the way, I hope, I hope that our leadership really understands how important this is to our community. This is the first time that our city has dedicated resources to comprehensively analyze community need in North Central. This is a cornerstone effort that I really have a lot of hope can bring us to better solutions. And, and as was mentioned before, you know, regarding the bike lane, as many folks know, I advocated very strongly, and I pleaded with my former colleagues to please pause implementation, allow for the Complete Streets process to, to, to take its course, and figure out what is the bicycle network design that is appropriate in our neighborhood, looking at the context, looking at safety considerations, looking at our, our roadways and lack of infrastructure investments over many years. And so, I, I truly hope that when we're doing this analysis, that we look at where there are gaps in outreach, where there are gaps in the framework of the analysis, like going back to the point I was making earlier about intersectional issues. Intersectional issues that can only be identified through lived experience input. I, while I appreciate community members coming from outside of the neighborhood, it really, it, there's no substitute for the lived experience that we have as, as North Central residents who walk and, you know, and bike and scoot. I personally will tell you that my kids, by my own instruction, will only bike on the sidewalk. That's, that is how they bike and scoot, because it is not safe in my neighborhood to bike on the streets. And so, I, you know, I feel, I feel encouraged. I think that, you know, my, my main feedback is that I, I have concerns about us missing the intersectional issues. I have concerns about the potential of missing windows for funding opportunities, looking at, you know, where other resources are coming in. And this, you know, we got to strike while the iron is hot. Right now, we're doing the outreach. We could be doing this so much more efficiently if we're looking at, you know, and cost-effectively, so that we're planning for the equity community priority areas in a comprehensive way, not solely looking at, at transportation safety, but looking at those, all of the, all of the intersections that impact transportation, right? And, and, you know, just one example, because I have the floor, many people brought up the, the issue of having people park in front of their, you know, on their lawns. One of the issues that I had hoped we would be talking about, and I still have hope that we will be addressing, is how can we incentivize and support a program that actually allows for the creation of off-street parking in a creative way? Those are examples of policy programs that I think are worth exploring, that are, that are potential solutions that haven't been considered. One-way streets analysis, you know, bike, you know, bike network opportunities, right? Where do they make sense? That was, that was what I had hoped for when, when I put my eggs in this basket of, hold on, community, we're going to do this analysis, and we're going to do it right. And so, I, I think we're getting there, and I, and I hope that this council will support the full and robust and well-funded analysis that this community deserves.
So, through the, through the mayor, love to respond because I know that being here for seven months, had, you know, discussions, just, just talking about the flexibility of onsite parking, and that's something that I believe staff, actually, I know, staff has it in their work plans to look at citywide, not just in North Central. So that's something over the next year that we'll also be looking at, understanding that parking is a big issue across the city, and especially in North Central. Additionally, just really thinking about how we do, you know, really good engagement and making sure that we're building those relationships in the neighborhoods, all neighborhoods in San Mateo, but especially in North Central. I acknowledge that as well. And so that's something that, you know, we'll be working towards as we continue to build our engagement capacity here. During my tenure as your city manager, that's something that I'm looking at as a priority as well. So, looking forward to that. Now, I'm looking at the time, understanding we have a regular meeting. We'll have to push that second item probably to the end of the evening, if that's okay through the mayor.
Or perhaps do we continue it to another meeting? Because it's going to be a pretty late night.
We, we can do that. At the council's pleasure.
What do you, what?
I think it's better to decide now, because then they're not waiting indefinitely.
Sure.
I would recommend that we reschedule the DEI presentation for...
April 1st is pretty late.
Okay, for April 1st. Councilmember Lorraine, Councilmember Hedges, are you okay?
Yes, I'm okay, and I've had my hand up to make a final comment.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, I'll make it.
Sure. Let me just ask, are you all right with that?
Yes.
On April 1st? Yeah, okay. So, April 1st. So Denise can go home and not stay till 2:00 a.m. Councilmember Hedges, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I heard what the city manager said about revisiting many of the issues in the city, but we did make a promise to North Central that we would revisit this, and I agree with Dave. We really need to get on it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well then, we will, at this point, you have a lot of feedback from the public and from us. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will end the, the special session, and we'll take a 10-minute break to set us up for the next regular session. Thank you all very much.